We have ignition.
Alright, good evening everyone. Everyone can I have your attention? Thank you. Hi, good evening, thank you for coming to the April 8th Planning Board Work Session. Thank you. I will call the meeting to order. Can you please join me, face the flag, say our pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, so it seems we have two items on the agenda. Two very important items. The first one, we have the applicant, Ekroim Halper. Apologize if I pronounce that incorrectly. Thirty-six North Street, application for subdivision and site plan, FBL 107-2-63. Our M zoning district proposal includes subdividing the subject property into two parcels and seeking approvals to construct a four-unit townhouse on each lot for a total of eight units. Hi, how are you?
Good. Hello, board members, my name is David Nimatko. We're in the DAE firm that's doing the project. Actually, it's the first time I had an opportunity to meet with the board. Usually it was an employee you might have been presenting. So, this process started last year, and as you know, do you mind if I take my passport or...
Okay.
Okay, sure. So during the process, we presented plans to subdivide this 1.5 acre lot into two lots. One would house, the new lot would house a three-townhouse development within that lot, and in the other lot, the existing house and separate barn would remain. We provided engineering plans to further that design. During the process, it became evident that the existing house is in poor condition, as the building inspector had notified and had acknowledged the fact. And it is a pre-existing non-conforming condition. It's only .8 feet away from the property line. The front yard doesn't comply. And at that time, we thought it might be best to take it down and add and develop that site into a three-unit townhouse development also. In doing the calculations, and we let the village know that our intent would be to amend the planning board application, during that time, we decided perhaps to add a fourth unit to each. Again, three units on each lot complies with the zoning code, so we would be able to get it by right. All the bulk requirements would be satisfied. The technical aspects of it are satisfied. A fourth unit had come up in the discussions, and we realized that it would impact the zoning code in a minimal sense, only about point, about 15 percent. So, we alerted the village, and we asked that we'd like to go ahead with this, and they directed us to the zoning board. At that time, we completed the application and the plans, and submitted it to the zoning board. In fact, the zoning board gave us the public notice. We noticed the public, we sent out the mailings, we went to the zoning board. They weren't prepared to entertain the project and refer us back to the planning board. So we're here now before you to present this amended application for four units on the two lots. And we do realize that it will require variance. That's what we were asking for, and that's why we were there for the zoning board. The units are, would be the same for both lots. There are only 1,152 square feet of habitable space with a garage underneath. We did provide a rendering. The rendering that was submitted to you in our initial application was one that showed one row of townhouses. I believe one of your comments was just trying to make it more contextual with the neighborhood to repeat the historicity of the surrounding structures, which we tried to, but we will accomplish even further. Then, one that we submitted to the zoning board just shows the same doubled, with the existing house removed and the new townhouses taking its place. I believe one of the comments from the planning board at that time is to have one unit face the street. We accomplished that. As you'll see, the one front entrance is facing the street, as you have in your rendering, and the other three would be facing a service road or a road that would come off of the main street and service both areas. The, just to give you an initial broad statement, we submitted our zoning board application to you along with this submission. I referred to it in our cover letter. And the reason why we did that was to show the minor impact it would have on the zoning code. In brief terms, 10,000 square feet is needed per unit. We satisfy that easily with three units. Since each lot would be 33,000 square feet, the remaining, you do the math, the 30,000 is needed for three units. We had a fourth unit that would reduce the amount of area per unit to 8,250. This results in a 17.5 percent variance that would be needed, and we believe that this is minor since the lot coverage of the four units is only 15, 16 percent of the area. So you have 84 percent of the area free and unencumbered. So it doesn't impact the land to that extent. It still remains a minor coverage of the area, and we thought it would be something that the zoning board could entertain. So, I'm here to answer any of your questions. I'm imagining that you would refer us back to the zoning board to entertain that variance, also so that you know we asked the zoning board to keep the public hearing open since the neighbors were noticed and everybody's aware of the project. So instead of closing it and wasting those funds and time, we asked them to keep it open so that we could go back and continue the process.
David, did you receive the April 3rd engineering comments?
No.
Okay. John, can we get him a copy?
I'm sorry?
Can we get him a copy of the April 3rd engineering comments?
Yes.
Sort of comments, okay.
Yeah, so we'll show, yeah, of course we'll provide the comments. And there was a piece of a letter from the public, which will also be provided to you.
Sure.
So, I'm speaking with, so John Perdizini, the village engineer who's not here right now. He's coming back from a meeting in Westchester. So, he might come or he might not come. The main thing that we would want to see before we refer you back to the CBA is a, this is a middle of the short EAF. This particular property is of general knowledge, known to be wet. It's in proximity to DEC wetlands. So we're thinking that the EAF would probably, could possibly hit on something in terms of wetlands and if any, to any degree, a DEC letter might be required to the... I'm not sure if you submitted previously, but it is a new plan. So it would much more construct, you know, entirely new building on it as well. So I think it would be appropriate to resubmit to the DEC after submitting all the EAF.
Yeah, well, again, it's not a DEC wetland. So the documentation that we submitted to you proves a fact. I mean, if the area is wet, it may be wet, any lot could be wet. But is it a regulated wetland? No. It's not.
Yeah, I think, so I don't have that letter. That was with the previous plan though, so...
But it's still the same 1.5 acres. So, you know, we can resubmit that. It's not gonna, and we will definitely include it with the EAF. And then, when you do the 239 referrals, you know, that could be one of the agencies that are listed and referred to to prove the fact. But right now, we do have the documentation showing that's not regulated.
I think the engineer and I were, one, I think we're speaking ahead of ourselves because we don't have an EAF submitted for this plan. So once that's submitted, I think we probably will want to see some involvement with DEC with this new plan, just because I understand that it is in close proximity to DEC wetlands, and they're not indicated on this plan, so it's difficult to say how close they're, how not close. But the concern is that it's generally known to be a wet piece of property. So we think it would be appropriate to examine that closer before referring it back to the CBA. That would be our...
I believe when we talked with that previously, we determined it was in a DEC wetland check zone, which means the DEC would have to come out and, you know, make an official report on the findings. But I said, I'm not sure if we've received an official report yet, or...
Yeah, okay. And I feel like John would have mentioned that in his comments, which I don't... He wants to see the DEC involved again prior to submitting it to the CBA, which I think is appropriate, especially considering that, so, C2, shoot, C2, you see the existing dwelling. So if the DEC came, did the DEC come out and check with the original plan? They did? Okay, so if they had come out and checked, I don't know what points they checked at, but now there is this new building. So if that needs to be checked further down that way, and if that's like the wetter side of the property, I don't know, because it doesn't show where the wetlands are. I think that's important to inquire further before referring them on because if DEC is, we need to know the parameters of our building allowances. I think that's the main comment. I also, my other comment was, I have North 36 LLC as the owner of record, is that correct?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, can you submit an order of verification just that the agent is authorized to appear on behalf, is that LLC or is a member of the LLC?
Okay, sure.
I got one.
I'm not carrying such weapons today, so...
This is a family here.
I shall return.
I'm a poor attorney, I only have one pen on me today, so...
My problem.
Another family here.
No, it's okay, I got one. Please be done. I just have one.
Never know.
I don't know, does the board have any other comments? There was a question about the positioning of the buildings also brought up by the engineering comments with regards to one driveway versus two driveways. If we want to see what the DEC says first and what other hits we get on EAF, we can wait for that until you make comments about the structure or if you have strong feelings about it now, it's fine to bring up whatever you folks want to do.
Well, my original comment about the side of the building facing the street. I have the rendering that you just showed. What you're saying faces the street is not the front of that building, or it is? That looks like a deck.
Well, it would be the front entrance to that unit. While the front entrances to the other three units would be off the service road or the private road.
The driveway, the 24-foot driveway?
Yes. 24-foot driveway would have three front entrances on it. The fourth or first front entrance, whichever way, would be facing the main road, North Street.
Doesn't show any access pathways, so I think that's why, probably.
Okay, that's not a problem, we can definitely show that.
And the 3D rendering you sent, is that scaled or not?
Well, yeah, so yes, most renderings are taken from a scale drawing and then blown into perspective, so yes.
Okay, so where does the 35 feet come from, the 35 feet height? Because if I load it up on my computer, according to the scale of that building, it is much higher than 35 feet.
I can provide the architectural plans, you know, to verify the floor heights and the elevation off grade, that's not a problem. Sure.
Anything on slab, foundation, raw space?
Slab on grade.
Another comment I'll have is on the design aspect. I even went down that street the other day, and to me, in my opinion, this building with the current design as it stands does not conform to any of the designs of any nearby buildings, in fact. In fact, it almost completely stands out to the other buildings that are in that area. When you have one large, big square building, and every single other building is very angled or articulated with covered porches and stuff like that, it does not fit in with the buildings of that area. When I think of more of a building that fits in, I just pulled up, you know, ran an image on Google Images here, you can get closer if you would like. Something like this more fits in if you're trying to make something look, you know, townhomes look like that area still. Because that area, every single building in it, kind of looks like this. They're all from the 1800s in a colonial era style.
Well, front colonnade or front porch is typical. The areas of having a porch associated with the building is contextual with the neighborhood. The difference with that is the porch is right on grade. With these, the porch would be elevated one story because of the garage and basement that's exposed to grade.
What I'm saying is, you can just, I can just put a porch on this building, it doesn't mean the building, you know, fits automatically now fits in a different area.
Well, okay, so...
I'm just saying the whole design of it overall.
What elements would you, what federal-style elements that are typical of this area or would you like incorporated on the building, and we will do so?
Stuff like decorative slats or what I call shutters. Shutters. Some buildings have pergolas. It's something that gives it more of a 3D feel, not just, you know, one big box. It can still be the building itself, or a cheaper, easier build, that big box, and from the outside has to look like something that fits that area, if you get what I'm saying.
We have the technology, we can do that, absolutely, sure. We can reverse the siding, we can add corbels, you know, to the overhangs. We can definitely do that. The rendering is at a stage where it's hard to detail or articulate unless we bring it in close. Because right now, I show the rendering away so that the two buildings are seen from the street, but we can give you closer views to identify the details that we would propose to make it consistent with the architecture of the area. Not a problem. Shutters, brackets, turn columns, it's not a problem.
And just to get back to where I was, so, they're two-level or three-level?
Well, the garage, with the garage and what we would call basement level is really on grade so that you can drive into the garage. The habitable space is the first and second floor above that. So from the road, it would look like a three-story building, but it's not.
So it's a three-story building? Because we're not in, you know, Europe where they have ground floor and then floor one and floor two. We have floor one, floor two, floor three, so it's a three-story building then. Even though it's not habitable, the first floor is still a first floor.
Well, the building code has different definitions of that from what you're saying. So we would base it on the building code of New York State.
And what is the building code of New York State?
Well, it's based on habitable space, you know, it's based on the amount that's protruding from the ground. So we would have to make it comply with the code, and we would do so.
Just so I understand clearly, so the garage is literally going to be the entire first floor?
And a basement, yes.
Okay.
Unless...
If somebody decides to finish the basement, then it's a three-level.
Well, that's up to the building department. I mean, I can't project into the future what would happen, but you know, that would have to be something that they would make applications to the village to do so and get permission to do so.
Because I'm thinking it's going to be well over 30 feet, 35 feet high with that style roof.
Yes, that's what I said, I agree with that. When I loaded up on my computer and I scaled it, it came down almost 45 feet high to the building. That's why it sounds confusing where the 35 feet came from.
You know, not a problem, we'll provide the architectural, so do so.
I see a note here on this, from the engineer about dumpster closure and, you know, on lot two. Any plans or any ideas for that?
Yeah, we welcome the opportunity to further engineer the site. And I'm looking for that direction from you. In my mind, the variances impact the project quite a bit. So for us to further design the site, it would be helpful to know if we will get the fourth unit on each lot, and will that be approved by the village? It'll affect the road, it'll affect everything. So it'll affect the dumpster location, whether we have one or two. I'm very interested to hear the point that Stephanie brought up. If the board wants us to entertain a single road that accesses both so that there's only one curb cut coming out to North Street. You know, we need that input from the boards for us to continue, in a productive manner.
I'm new here, so forgive me if I ask the wrong question or if I ask it the wrong way. If the front of these buildings or the front of one of these buildings was to face the road, how big a disaster is that from an engineering standpoint?
Well, one to...
I mean, the front of the building facing the road as opposed to...
The short, you mean the long side?
Right.
It would be hard to subdivide the land. Because you were talking about a flat hole lot, so you put one lot in the back and one lot in the front along North Street. Right now, we separated them from the vantage point of North Street to the left and to the right. And then access to the back would be, you know, very difficult. This would be the best way, optimum way to do it, except for the thought of a shared road. I mean, I did not think about that, and I did not have the comments. I think that's a valid thought.
I agree, I think shared road is a more valid thought because then, as I said, if we do get, let's say, you know, because I'm still sticking on something, you know, even though it doesn't have to have like the first floor with something like that, but something that looks more like the buildings of the area. That looks more like the buildings, you know, in the area, then you could have it almost be like its own little neighborhood design there where it's a shared driveway, you come in and you have homes facing, you know, across each other.
You, I couldn't ask for better than comments. I mean, my own office is a historic structure. So I love federal-style architecture, I love that turn in the century. So I am completely on board with everything you're saying. And to make it a village feel to it, absolutely, without question. You know, I'm not anticipating or, I will not be designing this in a modern, open sense of the term.
The back of each building is facing the same way? Right?
The back is facing...
They're both on the left side of the building?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's in the non-shared driveway design.
I mean, I know this is premature enough, but there is an existing home next to these two lots. Would we be able to propose privacy trees or some sort of berm? Because they're now going to be exposed to four backyards.
Absolutely. We would develop a landscaping and lighting plan to further the site design.
Can John get that letter?
I didn't see John.
You're supposed to bring a letter.
Can I get the letter for the cemetery?
No, not that letter.
In lieu of being here, she has to...
Say, a letter from the public, but it's a letter from the cemetery.
Okay.
Sounds strange. Sounds strange, right?
Committee of the Village Historian.
Oh, good.
John Perry just provided a letter. This is from the Village Historian. And it says here, "To whom it may concern, the proposed building site plans for 36 North Street border the Washingtonville Cemetery. The lots that are being considered contain a wet and swampy area and are a lower grade than the cemetery property. This historic cemetery started in 1854, constructed stone walls to define the cemetery property. These walls support the roads and is a protection against the wet zone. The Washingtonville Cemetery Committee and local Village Historian are concerned that if excavation is allowed to occur and Phil is brought in to change the grade of the lots, this will have an adverse impact on the neighboring properties. Erosion and deterioration will soon occur and damage will result to cemetery property. We strongly urge the Village of Washingtonville Planning Board to consider our letter of concern when discussing the proposed plans. Thanking you in advance for reconsideration, the Village Historian." So, this was brought to us as far as, you know, a major concern. And if you notice, Mr. Halper, one of our biggest priorities as the planning board and the...
The Vito.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Is aesthetics. Aesthetics one. That's why we're always concerned about how it looks, you know, what they should be, privacy fences, shrubs, you know, all very, very important things. But then also, just the safety of like our village itself. Environmental safety, a big priority. And the fact that we are missing the New York State DEC EAF, I feel like we're very premature. There's a lot of things that are missing here, a lot of missing points that you've just received from John that you need to address. Because in order for us to proceed, I feel like this is very important. You need to know first and foremost how safe you, adding this fourth unit, will be to the safety of that area and the neighboring areas. Not only just the aesthetic itself, you know, we'll discuss that once we get closer to that point. But we just need to be on the same page as far as what you're developing in this area will be safe overall for the community and the neighbors. From the look of the rendering, first and foremost, it looks like one of those Monroe compounds that you see right across the street from Curious Joe, on his land. It's an eyesore. And we don't want that here, especially in the historical area.
Absolutely, I agree.
We want things to have conformity. We want things to be aesthetically beautiful. As you can see, main streets already looking, you know, with the library and everything else. You know, you have a lot to consider for your plans, you know, when you come forward again next time. But, you know, with these concerns and these missing pieces that we see from your work product, we feel like you still need to come back to us with more definitive information. And as you've heard from our attorney, one of the major things is the EAF. We need to know if that is in fact an area where we can move forward with this project. So that's one important part. And as you said, it's still 1.5 acres, but the project you're giving us now is a new project, new, I guess, a lot. You're submitting something that's different, so we need to go with that new submission. What's your thoughts on this concern now that it's been brought up?
I, I have no problem with any of them, not at all. I'm no concern about the aesthetics. We can beautify the building without question and make it contextual to the neighborhood. But I go so far as to say I can, I'm the architect also, so I can say that will be done. Second thing, I just read over John's comments. We really have no concerns. I read the comments, there's nothing glaring to me. We have the sewer inverts, we have all that information from the previous submission. We did do a short form EAF on the first submission, that is in the documents. Will we issue that? And then just briefly on the Wood One, I mean, I'm sorry, Wood One, of Washingtonville Cemetery point, I, I'm not sure where they're getting that information from, but I just want to put the board's mind at ease. There's a spot elevation of 331.3, right next to the word First Presbyterian Church in Washingtonville. And if you go look right to the left of that, our finished floor at grade is 330. So the only difference is 1.3 feet. So I'm not, and we can further explore that, but right now, we're only proposing 1.3 for the difference between the two. And while the buildings are 42 feet plus 10, 52 feet away from the stone wall, I'd be hard-pressed to believe that excavation would impact that stone wall or cemetery. But we can cover that in our cover letter. But we can cover that in our cover letter.
The elevations that we're reading on the drawing, some are higher and some are lower?
Well, we had a grade the driveway, so it's three thirty-two to three thirty. And then actually, that makes our argument even more so. We have three thirty at the driveway towards the stone wall. And on the other side of the stone wall, it's three thirty-one point three.
And three twenty-eight in the back, all the way back?
Well, yeah, but that's a natural grade, that three twenty-five that right there you see shaded, that's already a natural grade. So we didn't even impact the natural grade in the back. So if the natural grade is not hurting the Washingtonville Cemetery, then our grades would not.
And do you have architectural drawings that you can provide?
Yeah, so to provide, to execute the rendering, you first initially do architectural plans of the front and side elevations. That's how you generate the rendering, so yes, we have it and I can provide that with the next submission.
And this would eventually go before the village board as our architectural review board?
Sure.
My other big thing, in order to be able to, again, if you wanted to belong to the CBA, the comment of the proposed setbacks lines on she two could be revised for clarity so that we can know the actual setbacks. And just to clean up the zoning table as well, please, so that it's clear.
Not a problem at all.
That's a big problem, there was so many comments, our comments that have to rely on other things to get done first before making those comments, you know what I mean?
I agree with you, Richard, I definitely agree with you. I, you know, kinda, you know what, we're gonna address the comments. And then, you know, hope that nobody can move further. I'm just repeating myself at this time, but a fourth unit on each land, each lot definitely affects the design. Having a single drive accessing both buildings, I think is a valid point, it creates the village type feel. I mean, if the board is inclined toward that, that's something I would really like to know now, if possible. I mean, cause it would definitely impact the whole design. And I have to say, I think it would impact it in a good way. Cause like you said, the long sides of the building will be facing each other, it will have the village feel to it, without question.
Is the entrance to the garage through the side with the yard, or is, it's not clear?
Well, we'll make it clear, but three of the units are on the side and.
With the yard?
Yes.
Okay. Right, so the only way to do it would be for the yards to face each other?
The fronts, yeah, the fronts.